We call the meeting of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, June 27, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Ernie Jettie will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here, I'm attending via Zoom due to work travel. I am in this room alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
You have thirteen, present, two absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, I had a few things. First, I wanted to follow up on the memo that Tim Cummings wrote to the Board of Aldermen concerning our cooperation work with BAE to secure a very substantial federal grant in order to expand and modernize their chip-making portion, the chip-making a part of their facility in the South End, and to engage the federal government or to support BAE in getting this grant. So the potential grant is under the CHIPS Act, and BAE has requested a grant in the amount of about $36 million to be supplemented by, invest, private investment by BAE. In order to qualify for the grant, they have to show that there is a cooperative agreement, that there is an effort by a government, either local or state, to assist in providing job training to individuals who would be employed as a result of the awarding of the grant. So we, working with BAE, specifically Tom Bishop, developed a plan to invest $200,000 if they are awarded the grant, in assisting to establish a training program for the people who would work at BAE, the new jobs. So we're optimistic that they will get the grant, and were they to be awarded the grant, they would be, they would, we would seek to reallocate some of the ARPA money to this purpose. And this is an important initiative, in my opinion. We want to develop a very strong, thriving manufacturing sector focused, focused upon strategic improvements like the manufacture of computer chips, which this is. Now, if the grant is awarded, they would add 24 jobs at BAE, plus some downstream jobs as well, and they would see a major improvement in their chip-making facility. So hopefully that grant will be awarded, and I want to thank Tim Cummings and Tom Bishop, Tim Cummings, of course, from our side, and Tom Bishop from the BAE side. They've been working on this for a number of months, and we have finally, they've finally come to a plan that we are optimistic will be successful. Madam President, I also wanted to mention the budget, which is before you tonight. The budget, as I proposed, was up 4.4%, less than the rate of inflation. There was, there would have been somewhat less if it hadn't been for the cyber attack and the expenses incurred as a result of trying to combat that. But the Budget Committee, and I want to thank you for all of your efforts and all of the time you spend, which is an annual ritual. You spent a lot of time reviewing all the various departments, made some adjustments up, both down and up, and came out with about the same bottom line. I can't certainly disagree with anything that the Budget Committee did. In terms of the priorities within the budget, I think community security was a top priority in that the budget as proposed and as adopted includes two new police patrolmen and a police sergeant. It returns the emergency management director position to the city and to the budget, and of course, we filled that by hiring Emily Marticello, and she has done like a fantastic job. And on the fire front, it also initiates a new position in the Fire Department, although only for a half a year, but that will get the position started. So those are the new positions. Public Works did reduce their headcount or their number of employees, not by layoff, but by just an open position, by one and a half positions, so there's a personnel reduction there. But again, I want to thank the Budget Committee for your focus, your devotion, the time that it takes. I have served on the Budget Committee in the past, and I know it takes a lot of work and sacrifice of various evenings. So thank you, Rick Dowd, and all the members of the committee for your work on that. And I suggest that the board pass it as proposed by the committee. I wanted to mention, Madam President, the Pride Parade, which was on Saturday. Again, a very successful event. A lot of people were involved in planning and executing the parade. From the Board of Aldermen, Shoshana Kelly, and Derek Tebow from Ward Eight was there as well. From the staff, Kath Palmer, Megan Karen, and a whole group of city employees planned this over a period of a long time. They raised money, sponsorship, so there's no city money involved. It's all paid for by private contributions. The restaurants were crowded, and there was a lot of people having a good time, and it did rain, but that didn't seem to dampen the spirits too much. Again, I think that that was a very successful, successful event. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to point your attention to the Wallet Hub survey that came out again, on the best-run cities in the country. They survey, I believe, 182 cities, and they evaluate the quality of services as compared with the cost per person, and as a measurement of the efficiency of the city operation. We moved up from fourth now to third, as they call it, best-run city in America. I think that, again, Madam President, is due to the efforts of many people, all of our dedicated and hard-working city employees across all of our departments, the Board of Aldermen, our management team, everyone contributes to this, and I believe it's an accolade that we, you know, should be proud of and try to improve even further. We have moved up over time. We were thirteenth at one time, and then tenth, and fourth, and third, so I think we are spending the city dollars effectively, at least according to this survey, compared with other cities around the country. And that, Madam President, is all I have, other than to wish people a happy summer and a happy Fourth of July, and I hope to see you over the course of July, and we'll be back here in August.
Response to the remarks of the mayor, stood over here. Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments, and I have to say that I was unable to make the Pride Parade. Vaccine sent me to 103-degree fever, so I didn't think it was good to be out there. But I thought the letter from Director Cummings explaining the chip program, and I'm very happy to see that the city being part of it, so thank you, and thank you, Director Cummings, for all that you do.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am sorry that I missed the Pride Parade. I was actually on important business in New York trying to secure funding for an LGBTQ+ sober living home that will hopefully open here in the city. I also took in a concert. But I understand my company also sponsored the event and from the pictures and videos that I've saw, great job to Alderman Kelly and mayor's staff working together.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Mr. Mayor, why aren't we number one? That's what we're going to hear. I think it's fantastic that we're number three and we moved up, and this is a great city. People don't realize if they haven't lived elsewhere how great a city really this is and how well-run it's been for many, many, many years. I did get a chance to attend the Pride Parade. I was lucky enough to hold the banner, the city banner, with Clerk Healy. And, you know, not being part of that community, you know, I don't know how it feels to be in that community, but walking down the street and seeing some of the faces of people that are, and they appreciated us walking and celebrating with them, I think really made a difference to them, and I hope it did, and I hope that, you know, we continue to have this every year. Alderwoman Kelly does a great job in her part, helping to organize it, and the city, Megan and Kathleen do a great job organizing it. And, you know, like you said, it doesn't take any taxpayer money away, and I think that's important because people think it does, and it does not. So it was a great event, the rain came, I was drenched on the way home, I had to walk home to my car, and it was, but it was a great event, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everybody from the city that put it on.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo all the sentiments on the Pride Parade. It's been an incredible thing that we've put together in the city for a number of years. Everybody put in so much effort, and it was a great, great day. I have to say, I was especially proud to see the viewing party from the Performing Arts Center. That was a really cool moment for me, and yes, it rained. I actually took the unicorn riding the rainbow off my car in the pouring rain, but we had a blast, so thank you, everyone who came out and everyone who supported on the staff and board of Aldermen.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Aldermen meetings of May 23 and May 24, 2023, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring procedural action and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Sam Derrifey, Planning Director, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed ordinance O-23-055, amending the zoning map by rezoning land off along the Amherst Street corridor from general business to general business with mixed-use overlay district, from park industrial to park industrial with mixed-use overlay district, and from highway business to highway business with mixed-use overlay district. Communication has been received from Sam Derrifey, Planning Director, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed amended resolution R-23-123, authorizing the granting of an easement to Penachuck Waterworks, Inc., for the construction and maintenance of a waterline. Communication has been received from Lisa Foto, Public Works Director, regarding referral from Board of Aldermen R-23-123 and R-23-128.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. And without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director, regarding discussion on CHIPS Act and developing a partnership with BAE Systems.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and sign it to the Budget Review Committee. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two people signed up. Andy Pearlman.
Madam President, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Preunier &amp; Pearlman here in Nashua. I'm here tonight on behalf of Rasen and Homes Elite, seeking approval, final approval and final passage of R-23-123 to allow an easement to be granted to Penachuck Water, so we can run a waterline from Manchester Street to the Rasen and Project. Some of you may know, the Rasen and Homes Elite purchased Barker property at the end of Bartlett Ave in the North End in March of 2022. 2022, 2023, we went through the Planning Board subdivision process to create 21 new, excuse me, 22, 21 new lots plus the existing Barker house, so for a total of 22. At the time, we knew the water pressure was a challenge, but we honestly did not know how challenging, what lack of water pressure we had in this neighborhood in the North End of Nashua. So as a result, we worked with Penachuck, and Penachuck determined that the best solution to provide water to the Rasen and Project would be to run a waterline from the high-pressure waterline on the eastern side of Manchester Street through Greeley Park to the Rasen and property. We initially proposed a route through the open field where the Frisbee Golf is, but working with the city, working with city engineer Dan Hudson, we came to an agreement where we're going to run the waterline through, or parallel to the existing Greeley Park road, so it minimizes any tree impact, it minimizes any view impact from Manchester Street. We all collectively came to the agreement that that is the best route for the proposed easement for the proposed waterline. The benefit of this waterline normally provides water service to the Rasen and Project, along with the necessary hydrant pressure, but it also roughly doubles water pressure to approximately 40, 40-some homes in this section of the North End of Nashua, on Bartlett, Wellington, Elliott, and so it's a benefit all around. We, the easement, has been approved by Penachuck, by Attorney Leonard, and we have positive recommendations from both Penachuck Waters Committee, Planning Board, and the Public Works, and so we're looking for final passage tonight. I'd be happy to answer your questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Fred Tebow.
Fred Tebow, 24 Cheyenne. Referring to the gay parade, somebody not long ago called me a cis. I still have no clue what that means. Want to talk about R-23-175, proposed budget. The Budget Committee added $1,812 to the budget, and that means it's going to take 10 votes of this board to pass that budget. I should want to mention the analysis attached to that budget. It says, this is added by the attorney, and says, and this is written by the attorney, Attorney Bolton, I presume, says court decisions concerning Nashville charters suggest that a court may find that this provision, 10 votes, anything over the proposed budget, when applied to the budget resolution itself is inconsistent with state statutes and therefore unenforceable, see memorandum of corporate counsel, March 8, 2018. I have read that memorandum, and I can tell you, Attorney Bolton, that's completely false. It's based on false and old law. It's based on a Manchester Supreme Court case back in 2010, where I was an intervener, been upended by 2011 law that authorized spending caps in state of New Hampshire. And I don't know, Mayor Donchis, why you allow this kind of a paragraph to sit in the analysis. It appears every year. It's faulty, it shouldn't be there. As far as the resolution itself, in the resolution, you see a comparison of the spending cap, and you also have a chance to take a look at the amounts of the budget that are proposed. General Fund, 317.5 million, same as the spending cap calculation. Same as for, same for Strasser, no mention anywhere in this budget about supplemental appropriations, only in the spending cap calculation. Why is that? That's because it shouldn't be in the spending cap calculation. The spending cap, both estate law and child law compares adopted budget from last year with the proposed adopted budget. Nothing beyond that budget. I don't know, Mayor Donchis, Attorney Bolton, how you come up with these conclusions. And I'm telling you, if you don't remove that last paragraph, which says you're $43.7 million on the cap, I will file with Attorney General a complaint about that you're not, that you're failing your official duties, and I'll apply that to Aldermen as well if you don't remove that paragraph. I don't know if the AG will act on that, but the court have noted.
Time is up.
That they're concerned with the spending cap calculation, will reexamine that in court next year. Thank you.
Ms. Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'm here to speak in opposition to the budget. You know, the 4.4% increase doesn't seem like much, but it's every year we are taking this budget up when the biggest issue is our student enrollments are going down. And what we're not being told is that once you apply additional escrow money that you usually roll in in September, that that budget goes up a couple more percent, and it's easy to become a 7% budget, which is what happened last year. I'm not a proponent of using significant amounts of escrow money to fund the budget. I think that should go back to the taxpayers. I'm very concerned about what's happening in risk management, being used like a slush fund to roll expenses over there that really are not property casualty expenses. I think the report that the consultant provided on the school was very eye-opening, and Wallet Hub may put it as number three, but the devil's in the detail, and you really have to look at the comparable cities that are used in that Wallet Hub analysis to determine if it makes much sense that Nashua is in it. And I think we all know what these studies and reports can say and your ability to sort of throw yourself in those lists. I think that we have a lot of work to do in the public education system here in Nashua, and I think we have a lot of nonpartisan work to do. I don't think parents care what party affiliation you are when they're trying to educate their children. They just want their children to have a good education, and I don't think we're delivering that through the Nashua public school system. Our reading proficiency level throughout the district is about 20%, and that is simply far too low for budgets of 59 million that keep going up every year. I hope that this board takes seriously the consolidation of the building plans. Consolidating buildings will do a lot for a specific group of students, especially special needs students who require services that are being split up between facilities, taking specialized people, making them travel building to building to deliver those services where the buildings are substantially underutilized. So I hope we give some serious thought to our property management for our school buildings and our performance in a very nonpartisan manner. When it comes to the legal office, no one is surprised when I tell you I think you need an overhaul. There's been a big liability issue that I think is caused by the legal office itself and the competency of that office. I'm going to be addressing that at the next public input, and I think that it's unfortunate it's been allowed to go there, but I think our lawyers need to understand what municipal law is about and how to serve a community as municipal lawyers. And this sue-us, see-us-one, raise-us-one mentality has to change. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding 4th of July fireworks display and the amount of 63,000 funded from 55660 Field Day and Fireworks General Fund.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract with Pyrotechnico Fireworks Incorporated of Jaffrey, New Hampshire for 4th of July fireworks display, any amount of $63,000. Funding will be through Department 177, Park and Recreation Fund, 55660 Field Day and Fireworks/General Fund by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it, please.
Alderman Como.
Thank you. This passed unanimously through the Finance Committee. It's worth noting that it's the same company that we've used in years past, they just changed their name to Pyrotechnico, and this three-year contract will actually deliver substantial cost savings to the city over the three-year period.
You've heard the motion, it's a discussion on the motion. Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you. So I have, I have no disagreement with the work that the Finance Committee did and the superintendent of Parks and Recreation and the Board of Public Works as far as choosing this company and the contract that they, that they've worked out. But I, you know, I do have a problem with the whole concept of our taking approximately $20,000 each year, you know, blowing it up into the year and, you know, leaving, you know, a lot of smokes and smoke and ashes with that money. I'm not against the fireworks. I'm not unpatriotic, don't, you know, please don't think that I am. I'm an army veteran, you know, I love our country, I celebrate the Fourth of July, I enjoy fireworks, good fireworks show as much as anyone else. But I'm, you know, it's, it's always concerned me about, you know, city taxpayer money being used for this purpose. And there are other cities that do, you know, a very nice job, you know, as far as fireworks are concerned. New York City is one, Boston is another, and I learned that Portsmouth, New Hampshire, is another, where they don't use taxpayer money for this purpose. They are lucky enough to find corporate sponsors to pay for this. And, you know, I would, I would like to encourage us, the fact that we're entering into this contract with this company doesn't prevent us from trying to find, you know, whether it's, you know, a corporate sponsor, you know, BAE sounds like a good fit to me, but, you know, any, any corporate sponsor or, you know, Rotary Club, Lions Club, you know, any of those groups that would be willing to come up with, you know, the $20,000 each year to sponsor this, you know, we could sell the naming rights, you know, we could still have the celebration, but not at taxpayer expense. I know it's very popular, and people may be questioning why I would even bring this up, but it's, it's how I feel, and so I want to put that out there. I would encourage, whether it's the park superintendent, the commissioners of Public Works, or the mayor, the mayor's office, to, you know, think about the possibility of trying to find a partner, a corporate sponsor, who would be willing to, you know, defray part of, or if not all of, the cost of this celebration. So, thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I was about ready to call Alderman Jettie, I'm patriotic, but when I hear what he had to say, I actually, it makes a lot of sense. You know, I'm going to support this because I think most people in the city, with the exception of people who own dogs and maybe have small children, like the fireworks, and I think they would probably be okay with their taxpayer money going to that. But I also think, maybe it's economic development, maybe that can find some sponsors, but I think that would be a fantastic idea if we had someone sponsoring the fireworks every year, and you use, you know, their sponsorship and their name and their signs or whatever to do that, because we could save 60,000 or 20,000 a year, whatever, on it. So I think that's a pretty good idea for someone to look into in the future.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you. I do also agree with Alderman Jettie. We did it for the Pride Parade, I'm sure we could do it for the Fourth of July. I was something to look into, obviously supporting this today, but, you know, many wise statements come out of my colleague over here, and that was one of them. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you. So I understand your concern about the cost, but I worked on fireworks for But I've worked on fireworks for over forty-five years for the city. And you may think getting sponsors for some of these activities is easy, but it isn't. We have a summer fun program that we raise in the vicinity of maybe twenty thousand dollars, but the city still has to provide some cost to that because you wouldn't get all these programs, um, taken care of. I work, I, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Senior Center, and this year, uh, sponsorships are down. If they were giving you a thousand dollars, they're only giving you five hundred or maybe two hundred and fifty. Things have changed. So unless you could get someone committed for a five-year period to pay for these fireworks, what happens? This is part of our city's celebration for Fourth of July. It starts early in the day with the kids having, um, events, having lunch, and then it proceeds with the concert or a baseball game and, um, finishing off at the Lions Club tribute to the Hall of Fame for Fourth of July, and then the fireworks. So, you know, it's wonderful. I'd love to see somebody write a check for sixty or a hundred thousand dollars to take care of fireworks, but that doesn't happen. And it's very difficult to get people to donate for things that are under the city's umbrella. So, um, I appreciate your thoughts on that, but you have to think about the hard work that it takes to try to get someone to sponsor something that is very important to the city when you see thirty-five or forty thousand people in Holman Stadium and the surrounding area enjoying these fireworks. And for some people, that's the most important thing for them in the summertime. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for waiver of school impact fees Covington Place, a condominium community, two-dash-twenty-one Sutton Way.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept place on file and refer to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the National Planning Board by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the Board of Aldermen meet in joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for the purpose of electing a trustee and call for nomination.
Good evening. My name is Tom Maffey, president of the Board of Edgewood Cemeteries. The trustees of Edgewood Cemetery nominate Mr. Brian Morrissey.
Thank you. There being no objection, I'll close the nominations. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andre. Trustee Armstrong. Trustee Gagnon. Trustee Dion. Trustee Hollis.
Brian Morrissey.
Trustee Law. Trustee Lozo.
Yes, Brian Morrissey.
Trustee Maffey.
Mr. Brian Morrissey.
Trustee McIntosh. Mayor Donches.
Chief Morrissey.
Alderman O'Brien.
Chief Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Sullivan.
Mr. Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Cle.
Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Moran.
Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Jettie.
Brian Morrissey.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Kamau.
Mr. Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Dowd.
Chief Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Goveya.
Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Karen.
Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Tebow.
Chief Brian Morrissey.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Brian Morrissey.
Alderman Wilshire.
Chief Brian Morrissey.
You have eighteen for Chief, uh, Brian Morrissey. And zero nays.
Okay. I'll declare Brian Morrissey duly appointed to the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for a term to expire March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-eight. Would you come forward for the oath of office, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee on the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the joint, joint convention now arise. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May sixteenth, May twenty-second, and May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three Budget Review Committees be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June twelfth, twenty-twenty-three Penachuck Water Works Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one-twenty-three authorizing the granting of an easement to Penachuck Water Works, Inc. for the construction and maintenance of a water line.
Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I motion authorizing, sorry, sorry. I motion for a final passage of R twenty-three dash one-twenty-three by roll call, and if I may speak to it.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, as Attorney Pearlman had, had mentioned, this was a, um, an amendment to the original easement in that it, uh, the best part of it is that it, it originally impacted almost twenty-four-hundred, um, square feet of, of the park, trees-wise. Um, and it was going to go right through the green space of the park. This moves it over so that it follows along the, the road, the fire road, I guess would be the best way to, to, to mention it. And it's only, it's only, I think, six-hundred-and-thirty-three, um, impact. So the, the decision that was, was made was this was the better one. The, um, the developer came to the table and was in complete agreement with it. The good part about all of this is not just so much that it, it helps the developer, but there are almost fifty homes in that area that have extremely low water pressure, very low water pressure. Um, I've been told you flush the toilet or take a shower. You never do both at the same time, just because there isn't enough water. And that is, is horrible. The entire area within that has very low water pressure. Penachuck is going to be addressing that in the next couple of years. So, um, my hope is that this is the right step. It doesn't impact the park very much, and it's a, a win-win for everybody. I do want to comment that from the beginning of this development, from the very first talk of development, I did mention that there was water issues. Um, we were reassured that this was not a problem. But when they looked into it further, as Attorney Pearlman had said, it was much worse than they thought it was. So, this is something to get that project started and to help many residents within that area. So I hope that you will support uh, the final passage of R twenty-three dash one-twenty-three.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
I've just been notified by the attorney that you, did, did you intend to adopt the amendment?
I apologize, yes. Did I, did I miss something? I jumped, I guess. It's my fault. No. Oh, okay. It was my fault. Oh, that, that's okay. That's okay. Um, I apologize. You were right. So I'd like to motion for, for the, the golden rod copied of R one-twenty-three dash, uh, twenty-three dash one-twenty-three to be adopted. Am I saying that properly? Attorney Pearlman?
I think what you want to do is move to amend
Okay.
resolution R twenty-three one-twenty-three by substituting the golden rod copy that everyone has received.
Thank you so much.
And if that amendment were to pass, then you want to move for, uh, final adoption.
Okay. Um, so as, as Attorney Bolton has, um, stated, I would like to, um, I'm sorry. My, my, I'm a little short hearing thing. Um, I would like to move to amend R twenty-three dash one-twenty-three with the golden, substituting with the golden rod copy. I, I know I said it wrong, so, but I think we all understand what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
So is there discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm motion for final passage of R twenty-three dash one-twenty-three as amended. And I, I think I've said all that I need to say, so.
Is there further discussion?
Fine job. Fine job.
Is there further discussion on the motion? The final passage, the final passage as amended. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one-twenty-three is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one-twenty-five relative to the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four proposed budget for the city of Nashua General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grant Funds.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend R twenty-three one-twenty-five by replacing it with a golden rod copy of amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, uh, first thing I want to do is thank everybody on the Budget Committee. We had several meetings and, uh, a lot of great discussion with the departments, the divisions, uh, to go over the, the budget in detail. And I think that, uh, everyone did a great job there, and I want to thank you for all the support that you've given to the budget. In the, uh, in the, uh, at the budget wrap-up session, we made some changes to the mayor's budget. And that amounted to, first, we added twenty-five thousand dollars to the Great American Downtown. In the budget, it was listed as twenty-five thousand, and the mayor had asked that that be amended to fifty. We've given fifty in all past years, so that was corrected. We made a motion to add ten thousand dollars to the sculpture symposium. We added fifty thousand dollars to welfare assistance. We added thirty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars to the Nashua Fire Rescue full-time salaries and wages to cover another quarter year of the new Assistant Fire Chief, uh, which will help the, the fire department try to reach for their Level One certification, which hopefully would reduce fire costs and for insurance for the homeowners in Nashua. And thirty-two thousand to the citywide communication part-time salaries and wages to, uh, assist in that area. One item was reduced, a hundred-and-fifty thousand in cloud-based financial software subscriptions that was determined that we didn't need. So the final, um, budget and FY twenty-three total appropriations is four-hundred-and-thirty-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred dollars. The last three years' average annual SNL IPD is five-point-nine percent. That allowable additional spending to last year's budget was in the amount of twenty-five-million-three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-six. That, uh, would have allowed us to increase the budget to four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-five-million-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. The total appropriations for FY twenty-three were four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-twenty-eight, uh, yes, four-hundred-and-twenty, four-hundred-and-twelve-million-two-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-three. So the total appropriations, uh, in this final budget is, uh, by the calculations of finance, under the spending cap by forty-three-million-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. So with that, I would like to, uh, have the golden rod copy accepted as the final budget.
Motion is to amend? Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yeah.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd now like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-three one-twenty-five as amended by roll call and pass the FY twenty-four budget so that we can start using it on the first of
So in order to pass tonight's budget, we need ten votes?
No.
No.
Majority.
A majority, even though we raised it eighteen-hundred-and-thirteen dollars?
Yes.
Thank you. Simple majority. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just a couple of things. I want to thank Alderman Dowd for doing a fantastic job this year with the budget and the Budget Committee. I went to, either I went to everyone or I watched every single budget meeting, um, you know, instead of having music on while I work, I'm listening to budget meetings, um, which is great. I learn so much. But I think, you know, the two things that I had issues with that I think, there's nothing we can do about it, I think, right at the moment, but I don't think we did enough for fire. Um, very, and Alderman O'Brien did a great job getting some stuff in, uh, the other day. But I think the floor at, at Amherst Street is something we either got to address in the escrow or find another way to pay for it. We can't have that collapsing because it's going to cost the city a lot more money. And I think we got to make sure we do a study for all the rest of the firehouses. So I think we need to do a little more there at some point. I wish it would have been in the budget, but I'm okay with the way the budget is now. The other thing is, and this is something that Alderman Sullivan brings up every year, is trust funds. You know, I thought we were going to look at them the past year because we said the same thing we were saying. And I, I heard Alderman Sullivan the other day, and someone else was saying the same thing. We got to look at these trust funds yet. Um, we didn't look at them last year, and so I think we have to look at them. When we say we're going to look at them, we have to look at them. Some of them we can't touch, you know, David Dean Skate Park is there for exactly a specific reason, and we can't move that money to somewhere else. But there's some other ones I think that, you know, we can either get rid of or do something with the money that's in there. And I think we, we, you know, I guess that's a Budget Committee. I'm not on the Budget Committee. But I think they need to be looked at and, uh, maybe pared down a bit. So, that's it. But I'm going to, so far, I'm going to approve the, you know, say yes to this unless, uh, we have some changes that I might have to decide on. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I want to thank the fellow members of the Budget Committee. It was a long slog. It's my second time around, so I kind of knew a little bit more about what I was doing. But my main takeaways... And so I am going to support this tonight. I do, you know, I have to swallow hard when I say, you know, a year-over-year tax increase for Nashuaans is tough. I understand that. But 80%, these are just my takeaways, kind of the headlines that I... Little learnings that I had. 80% of the budget is done before we even walk in the room. And that's from all of our prior-year activity: bonds we approve, contracts. So 80% of the budget, when you add all that in, is already done. I did learn the state law around bonded debt. I don't know who passed that. I don't know when it was passed, but I don't think that whoever passed it knows anything about the word cash flow because the amount of money that you can borrow based on your assets is crazy. But it's state law, so it is what it is. I was delighted to hear that we will get as much... At least as much in-state funding for education. That was one thing that we got. And I re-listened to the education budget meeting today. I was driving in my car, and I put that budget meeting on. So that's what I do when I drive. And I listened to that, and I was... I was... I know that there's been a lot of talk at the state level about these education freedom accounts. And what was interesting is that the COV for the city, for the school department, said to date, they haven't affected Nashua. So that surprised me. And I think it was good to hear that. I think also to capital improvements, one thing that we talked about is that we put a little over here, we put a little over here, we put a little over here, and I don't really know how much a little, little here, a little here, a little here will do. I'd like to see us do one large amount on a project, improve it, and make it better and make it whole. I loved the budget books. Loved them. Everything was online. It was easy to navigate. I was able to go back and forth, so it was really easy. So kudos to that, and I know that we'll improve on those next year. And then finally, it's been talked about a lot... Oh, sorry, two more things. Escrow accounts. I'm really going to be looking at those this year, really looking at that because that money is starting to creep into the general fund. So we need to watch that. So I am going to be looking at escrow accounts this year is when that comes out in the fall, probably. But then the trust funds. We have a lot. We have a trust fund for a city hospital. I didn't know that. We have one. It was passed a long, long time ago. And I think that these are things we just have to look at, evaluate, because not really sure what the purpose of them are and scale them down, build them up. Just look at them. I think it's... I think it would be good to take a deep dive, but I am going to support the fiscal year 2024 budget. Thanks.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I just want to allay any concerns with Alderman Tebow. I couldn't... And by the way, thank you for the compliment. But however, you know, as far as the Amherst Street Fire Station, it's not dead. What the issue at hand is, and for the public's knowledge, there is a problem. It has been identified. The solution has not. Okay? So what we're doing now is that the Fire Department is talking to engineers and coming up with the best type of solution. And there's others. I mean, we've got a couple of other fire stations that need some TLC, and these are municipal structures. So I'm hoping that it comes into the infrastructure, to which is lands and buildings, and we can work with the different division directors. I think Alderman Dowd and I have been in conversations, and I think we have some ideas that are swirling around in our minds that would be the best way for the taxpayer and to do this and increase the longevity of these structures. So it is a work in progress, and so I think it's good. And to Alderman Sullivan, my friends up in Concord, thank God we didn't let the American Education Freedom Act out the door. It died, I think, on the floor, so it was a good death.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight I'll be supporting the budget. I think it's fair. I think it's what the city needs, and when looking at a budget of this size, I look at what each department put into it, and I think they got more of what they need. I don't think they got everything clearly, but I think they got what they need to function and function at a good rate and a good clip without having many issues. I think when looking at a budget, and I know Alderman O'Brien and I were heavily involved in the one up in Concord this year.
Oh, yeah.
And the key to that one was everybody went away being mad at the budget. And I think that's a telltale sign, and I think that was the same down here. I think there's a lot of probably directors who are frustrated with the budget because they didn't get everything they want, but I think the Budget Review Committee did a great job vetting through everything and deciding the priorities for the city. So hats off to them, and I will be supporting the budget tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I also will be supporting the budget tonight. I just wanted to thank Alderman Dowd and the Budget Committee and all of the department heads for all the hard work that they put in. Like was mentioned earlier by the mayor, you know, when compared with the rate that everything else in our lives seems to be going up, this is a pretty modest increase. I definitely think that it's fair. You know, like was said earlier, everybody didn't get everything they wanted, but everybody got enough to make sure that the city continues to operate, and that's a great thing. I also just wanted to mention, on behalf of Alderman Lopez, who's not here, who I know would love to say thank you for the increase to the welfare assistance he mentioned on Facebook. That was the first time in a long time that the welfare assistance had gone up. And as my ward neighbor over in Ward 4, he and I have a lot of lower-income communities in Wards 4 and 6, and so I know that that is going to greatly benefit a lot of people in the city, so I was glad to see that happen. So I'm glad to throw my support behind this, and I'm sure that it will pass with no issues.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you so much. Want to echo a lot of the similar sentiments. The Budget Committee worked really hard this year to make sure that we were delivering a budget that was sound and fiscally responsible, but also met some of the needs that we get to hear every time a department head comes to us. So, you know, the work that we did a week ago, making some of those adjustments, including the welfare, which I was proud to work with Alderman Lopez on, were reflections on the work that we've done the last few months. I also want to echo that I thought the budget book was incredible this year. Have made some suggestions to help it be more inclusive, including making it so you can get large format and searchability online, and also looking at making sure you can get it in a different language so that everybody in our city can actually have access to and read through that book. I know that we have it and we carry it around for months, but I want to make sure everybody has access to it. And then the last thing I just want to say is, obviously, I'm going to be supporting this budget. I think it's, you know, we've done great work on it. But I want to highlight a theme that we've heard. This is my sixth budget season, which I know doesn't pales in comparison to some people who are going on their 24th, but I heard from a theme perspective that infrastructure is something that we really need to turn our eye to, and now that the Budget Committee has gotten this through, hopefully, I'm hoping that we'll be able to spend some real time on looking at the assets the city has in terms of buildings and infrastructure and coming up with a plan that'll allow us to be more effective in maintaining these because we heard things like Holman Stadium is going to need a huge renovation. We had to, you know, build a whole new middle school because Elm was no longer meeting the needs of our students. So I'm looking forward to longer conversations about that long-term planning and how we can continue to maintain the incredible city that we have.
Anyone else? Motion before us is for final passage of the budget as amended. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23-125 as amended is duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-23-055, amending the zoning map by rezoning land off along the Amherst Street corridor from general business to general business with mixed-use overlay district, from park industrial to park industrial with mixed-use overlay district, and from highway business to highway business with mixed-use overlay district.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for final passage of O-23-055 by roll call, and I'd like to briefly speak to it.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. This rezoning of the land up on Amherst Street's been in the works, starting conversations at PDC. I had a conversation with Alderman Clemmons and then about what we can do to encourage more building, mixed-use building, and then it turned into a conversation with my colleague from Ward 9 about how we could get places like IKEA and the Tuscan Kitchen Village thing that's over in Salem up onto Amherst Street. And this is kind of one of the first steps. And speaking with Director Sullivan, the main question was, is there any interest in building and development in that area if there was an overlay? And the answer was yes. And I know Director Sullivan is here if there's any questions. And I see my colleague to the left has the map up and reviewing the strip of land. It goes from, I think around where the old Building 19 is, all the way down to Northwestern Boulevard, where, right before Southern's psychiatric facility is. I think that's the cutoff there. But we would hope that this would allow development to come in and build some mixed-use housing on top of maybe, you know, maybe there will be an IKEA. Who knows?
We could hope.
I wouldn't have to go to what's it, Stoughton, to assemble my furniture. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 23-55 by roll call. Further discussion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I enthusiastically will endorse this. I was happy to see exactly where it was. I think that this... I think that this plot of land is really... It can really be pivotal to kind of the next century, if you will, for the city. Has easy access to the highway. There's great infrastructure there already. I know I'm going to be tarred and feathered for saying this, but a year ago I thought, boy, the Performing Arts Center would look really good down here because it was so close to all these other areas. But I think this is great. I've been reading so many articles, not only of different towns here in New Hampshire, but all across the country, trying to catch up on their land use code because of the new economy that's coming. We talk about manufacturing and where economies are going. It's not just the old factory building that really got Nashua started. Now there is, you know, medical, there's light manufacturing, there's research, there's all these great little pockets of the economy that I think we can now go after and throw housing in that on as well. So I think that this ordinance gets that started, so kudos to my colleague to my right for putting this through. Thanks.
Further discussion. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I thought we had some really good discussions in the Planning Economic and Planning and Economic Development Committee on this. I think it's a great idea. I mean, we get accused of only caring about downtown, and I think this is what the plan that Director Sullivan and prior Director Cummings has had for a long time is, you know, the Imagine Nashua to go around the rest of the city and look at what we can do to bring in development. And I think Amherst Street clearly needs some work there. I was glad to see Alderman Clemmons extend it a little bit all the way to that market basket so we could do a little bit more with it. But, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, I think I've had conversations with Director Sullivan that, you know, DW Highway is the next, and, you know, Spit Brook Road, there's lots of... Maybe some things we can do down there as well to kind of spur the same thing. I know it's not as big right now as Amherst Street is. I know we've had that discussion, but I'm going to support this, obviously, and I hope that we continue to do this stuff throughout the city where we have the opportunity to do that.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Like my colleague from Ward 9 said, I also will enthusiastically support this. I had thought for a while now that the development out in Salem, the Tuscan Village, is just phenomenal piece of development, and it's not finished yet. Sorry, I mentioned it on Facebook. I know I shouldn't. And, you know, they're like, oh, it's a concrete jungle because it's not done yet. But it... I lived in Denver and Boulder for a number of years, and this is pretty much all they're building in other parts of the country. And these, I call them these little self-encapsulated communities that have housing and coffee shops and laundromats and things like that in these little micro towns. And it's just, they're great places to live. So I've always thought that Nashua should have more places like that, and I'm glad to see that this legislation will at least open the door for someone to pitch us an idea. It doesn't mean that we have to do it, but it allows a developer to come up with some creative solutions, at least for us to consider. So I'm glad that we're moving in that direction. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'm not going to say a lot, but this... And I'm really going to support this. I support Director Sullivan's efforts in this area. Our land use code is way overdue for modification, and some of the issues we've had with developments lately has been because our land use code is not up to snuff yet. And I know he's working on it diligently. In this instance, Amherst Street, that issue's been going on for at least 30 years. Back when I was chair of the ZBA, and the only thing they wanted out, whatever group it was, wanted out there was industrial, and then the city just started charging the first 200 feet as general business, and the whole thing went crazy. So this will allow the zoning board and the planning board to have much more freedom in working with staff to develop this area in a logical and sensible way. So I fully support it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance 23-55 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R.-23-132 relative to the acceptance of $150,000 from New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself, Alderwoman Kelly. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-23-056 permitting certain funding transfers within the Public Works Division.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. Period for general public comment.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I've stopped, started my stopwatch here. Wanted to ask if the board will be doing a final review on the Art Center, the closeout or the cost for the project, and whether there would be any kind of public comment allowed to that. I think it's important. That was a very closed-book project compared to other construction projects that the city has taken on. There wasn't a lot of public involvement because of the nature of accepting the new market tax credit money. And I have pretty much strongly disagreed with that type of funding being used in a municipal project, and I'm very concerned with Director Cummings initiating more of these types of projects with new market tax credit money in Nashua, as he indicated he might do for the Elm Street Middle School. I want to let you know that the corporations that were formed, there were three. The 201 corporations were supposed to be nonprofit public corporations. And I challenged Attorney Leonard on this when the... I challenged Attorney Leonard on this when the bylaws were written, and I read them, that they were written as private corporations, and their meetings were essentially being done private, and all of their records were being maintained private. And I could not get Attorney Leonard to address why the bylaws were done this way. We hired a consultant out of Drummond-Woodsom and paid him $65,000 to do the work on the paperwork for that new market tax credit, and he did the bylaws wrong. And because I couldn't get Attorney Leonard to work with me, I filed the 201 corporations into the lawsuit in Superior Court, challenging those records. And essentially, I won. That's, I've been in settlement with, which was announced in court. This is not, I'm not revealing anything that was, is private. McLean-Middleton joined representation for the 201 corporations, which we are paying, the taxpayers are paying the legal bill for McLean-Middleton.
One minute.
And they immediately, when they joined on, they contacted me and said, we don't know why these bylaws are done this way. They don't make any sense. So they wanted to settle out quickly. I said, no, I want to do discovery. They stayed on, but essentially, they've completely written the bylaws, have made them a public corporation. They're going to be adopted by the board in August. And my question to you is, why did you allow me to have to waste my money and time to go to court? And not my money.
Thirty seconds.
But we're going to pay McLean-Middleton out of the taxpayer dollars, probably 60 grand, to represent this issue that Attorney Leonard would not correct when I tried to speak to her. And I think that's ridiculous. I mean, there's a lot of questions of fraud in that Art Center project, and why it was done the way it was done. And that's going to be taken through the court. But honestly, I think she was a terrible municipal attorney in doing what she did to hide the misrepresentation of those corporations and force me into court. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board. I'll start on this side tonight. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two quick things. Speaking of the Performing Arts Center, I got to go to it a couple weeks ago, or a week and a half ago. It was the first time since the opening for Toad the Wet Sprock, and I got to see Alderman Clemmons. I don't know if Alderman Sullivan saw me, but he was kind of in my row all the way down the end, dancing up and singing and having a good time. So it was a great show. I loved that place. You were definitely dancing.
Absolutely. I'm a good-time guy.
So it was great. I mean, I think the place was sold out, or looked sold out to me. I really enjoyed being there. I think it's a great thing for the city, and I know other people have gone for other events, and there's many more events coming up. The only other thing I want to say is, I was watching the budget meeting last night, and Alderman Jettie brought up a good point. They were going over the multicultural festival and talking about the trust fund, you know, for that. And his point was that no one was there to speak for it. And when we have these things come up to our committees, and there's no one there to kind of tell us what it is if we have questions. And so, and we've had this happen before in other committees, and I don't know how we fix it, but it'd be great if, when we're voting on these things and trying to pass or not pass them, that we have someone there that we can ask questions for, so we can get them answered, so we can make the right decisions by the city and not kind of guess on things. So I want to thank Alderman Jettie for bringing that up again last night. So thank you. That's it.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to start out by thanking the volunteers who helped me clean the rotary out in front of North on Friday afternoon into the evening. A lot of confusion from the public on that project. That was kind of fun, made for an interesting weekend. But it was amazing that, you know, when I was called and I explained to people what the project was and how we were going about it, that they went away with a better understanding. So it's a three-phase project, as I like to say, and the first one was what we did last Friday, and that was a whole community effort. I mean, it wasn't just Ward One. We had some members from Ward Seven, as well as Ward Five, helping us. And that was just to clean it up, and we did that. Now we're on to Phase Two, which we're working with Brian Connan and Parks and Rec. And we have the Conservation Commission Chair and State Rep Dutzy, who is also helping us with what we want to see with that rotary, and hopefully we can replant it to make it look presentable and also a low maintenance kind of rotary. So it was good to have the community together. I think it kind of got confusing with some other people when we said what we did, but I think the project as a whole will be great for Ward One. It's something since I've been elected, people in the ward have wanted to see. So sometimes you just have to roll up the sleeves and do things yourself, and it was a good way to get the project running. And I look forward to working with DPW, the Conservation Commission, and really anybody else who wants to jump in. I am not an expert on this by any means, so looking for anybody who wants the help. And I think this will turn out to be a really good project come the fall. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, again, just want to thank the Budget Committee for excellent job and for the entire board for passing the budget unanimously. I think we did a lot of work to get it fine-tuned to provide the needs and requirements for the people of Nashua while keeping a frugal eye on, on the overall spending. The budget books, they were new this year. We, at the beginning, I had a lot of suggestions for the budget book, and with John Griffin and Cheryl, we, they came up with a new way of doing them. I know that some of them are very challenging for people who are visually challenged, so I'm thinking that next year we're going to try and add foldouts, which would give bigger numbers and easier to see. So we'll, we'll work on that book, so we get a little while to do that. So the other thing is, it was just brought up about having people there to talk to their legislation. We could take the position, formally, I guess, but we could take the position, if the sponsor of the legislation isn't at the meeting, it gets tabled automatically. But that's something we can discuss, but that's one way you'd ensure whether somebody's there or not. And I think it's probably a valid thing. The other thing is infrastructure. Yes, I have talked to Chief Buxton about the fire stations and the study they want to do, and, and we do need to look at that. We're also in the Infrastructure Committee looking at the parking garages. Another thing is the stadium. We're pretty much done with schools. We may have one little tweak left, but other than that, we should be a while before we have to go do another school. So I think it's the time to look at some of these other city projects. Just for information standpoint, the school department has over $1 billion in infrastructure. And the Board of Education took a motion last night to add more funding for maintenance. So I think we're getting that, but it's something that we have to take a really strong look at because, you know, we can spend a little money now, we can spend a lot of money later. Even the high schools, the chiller on one of, I think it's north, but it could be south, has to be replaced this year. And after being 20 years old, there's things that fail. The parking lots need touch-up, or soon they'd have to be totally done, which is a difference of maybe, you know, 30,000 versus a million. So, I mean, we better look at infrastructure. It's, it's something that we've got to do citywide on city, on all city buildings. And I'm not saying that we, you know, do everything at once, but we need to make a plan and stick to the plan, and we haven't done that, so.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just one thing. This past Saturday, I was privileged enough to be able to volunteer for an event called We Ride So They Fly. It was a organized motorcycle ride that raises money for an organization called Honor Flight. And Honor Flight raises money to take primarily at this time, World War II veterans and fly them down to DC and give them accommodation so they can see the memorials for the wars that they fought. And they're unfortunately starting to transition more into Korean War and Vietnam War veterans, as we have fewer and fewer World War II vets left. But the event raised, I want to say, a little over $20,000. We rode in honor of World War II veteran Harry, Henry Narashevitz, who unfortunately passed away a couple of months ago. He was able to take his Honor Flight a couple of years ago. They flew him down to DC. He had a great time. So that is a wonderful event that is put on every year in June to raise money for Honor Flight. And if anyone is interested, the website is wiridesotheyfly.org. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak because I already spoke to the Budget and Pride. Thanks again for everybody who worked on both of those projects. But actually, Alderman Kamau's comments brought to mind something. I actually got to, I was in DC when an Honor Flight went out, and it was a super powerful event. They talked about and brought forward all of the veterans as they were getting on a plane. So it was really moving. So thank you for your dedication to that, and let me know if I can help support it.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So I'd like to wish everyone a Happy Canada Day, which is coming up on Saturday, July 1. And also Happy Independence Day. Enjoy the fireworks show. But please, you know, go to the stadium, enjoy the, the $20,000 fireworks show. But please don't buy fireworks. Fireworks are illegal in Nashua. And so please don't buy fireworks and set them off at your home to the detriment of, you know, people for whom that's, you know, annoying and irritating, and children and dogs, et cetera. And I want to congratulate Alderman Moran for shepherding the rezoning of Amherst Street through to encourage the, the business development there. But please stay away from Ward Five. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll do my best, Alderman Jettie. First and foremost, I would like to congratulate my wife, Lisa, for receiving the Outstanding Young Alumni Award from Riviera University. She received it a couple weeks ago. I'm proud for her accomplishments and getting that award. But I know that her father, who passed away six months ago and who retired from Riviera, would be extraordinarily proud of her. And I give her a great acknowledgement for the work she does at her, our company, in the city when it comes to charity, and a sweet recognition of all the work her father did at that school and how it led into her career. She got tuition remission because her dad worked there, and she got her degree, finished it up, and put it to good use. So I'm very proud of her, and I know my father-in-law Bill would be too. Other than that, I wish everyone a Happy Independence Day. Be safe on the 4th of July. This will be the first 4th of July in quite a long time. I won't be seeing the fireworks at Home Stadium. I'll be away, which doesn't feel different. But wish everyone luck.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to correct the record as far as the Performing Arts Centers meetings. They were open to the public. I was on the committee, and it was more dynamic than any other meeting I have been at. We sat in Room 208. Members from the public, including Mr. Teboom, Mrs. McCarthy, were there. They gave input real time. As the conversation was happening, they were giving input. They were giving ideas. It was not just Alderman. It wasn't just people who were on the committee that gave it. It wasn't city folks that gave it. It was people from the public. They came in and spoke. It was the most truly dynamic meeting that, that I have attended since I've been an Alderman. And, and I'm very proud of all the work that they did. There was a lot of, I can tell you, there were times when I voted completely opposite of everybody else. Might have pouted a little bit, but, you know, in the end, we have a really beautiful Performing Arts Center. I think that a lot of hard work went into it. We shot for the stars and accepted what we got because Director Cummings kept us in line. Trust me, if we had gotten away with all the things we'd want, we would have had these beautiful plush seats with nice cup holders and so on, but the budget didn't allow for it. And he kept reminding us over and over and over again. There were people from the public that were there, such as Mr. Teboom, who at the beginning were completely against it, felt that it was going to be a, a money pit. By the end, he was telling us all what good jobs we had done. There were times when he still disagreed with this. Please don't, he was not 100% on board, and I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but even those that were naysayers came to the table. So I just want to make that very clear. It was open to the public. Meetings were, were put out there. That's how we all knew. I also want to just kind of add one more thing to Alderman Jettie's comments about the fireworks. PTSD veterans are extremely affected when people set off fireworks, illegal fireworks, and I'm going to keep saying the word illegal fireworks, in their yard. It is legal to buy them in the state of New Hampshire, but not to use them within the city limits. And I can give you an example of what happened. I knew a PTSD patient who had been working through all of his problems. He was doing phenomenal, got a job, had an apartment, and people were setting off fireworks. He was taken out by ambulance because he reverted back to his PTSD. He's never left. He has been infirmed ever since, and that's been probably close to five or six years. That breaks my heart, and I don't care if it's one veteran. We say that we're doing this because we're celebrating our veterans. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Jettie, myself, we worked really hard at the Delena's House to put on a vent so that they have something during the daytime, so they can stay in when all those fireworks are going out. So while we all may love the fireworks, there are a number of people, children, pets, and PTSD veterans that don't. So I just hope that people do listen. I know Facebook will say they have the right. Well, these people have the right to live too. And then I just want to, on a, on a happier note, I just want to remind everybody, I know it's a month away, but Ward Three is having their Park Fest. We have a lot of vendors there. We have a Facebook page. It's facebook.com/ward3parkfest. Currently, we have a Stonehouse picture contest going on. There are a lot of proms going on, a lot of weddings. Send your pictures in. We're giving three prizes with a value of $50 for the, the top three that are chosen. We're selling t-shirts for $10. We're only going to, at the event, have a limited number of medium, large, and extra large. So if you want a different size, I guarantee you have one. We're going to have a lot of different people there. Ellie the Comfort Dog is going to be there. We're going to have our ACO there to teach children how to approach dogs. Fire Department is going to have a touch truck. Public Health will have a vehicle there. We're going to have 20 raffle baskets plus. They keep growing. People keep donating. We're going to have two children's bikes, a boy and a girl, with training wheels, helmet, elbow, knee pads. And there's so much more. And one of the things that we had donated to us was the N for Nashua book. It's really interesting. It does the entire alphabet from A to Z. Artwork was done by a number of people within our city and so on. So I hope everyone will come out, especially from this board, as well as citizens. We call it the Ward Three Park Fest. It's going to be held at Greeley, August 13, 10:30 to 2:30. And I'd like to personally thank Alderman Moran, who made a generous donation for making this happen. Billiards in Detroit North made a large donation. Randy Trammell did. Shirley's Florist. We just, Representative Spears did. It's because of people like that, and all this money is going to TAP, which is the Teachers and Pets Paws Program, I'm sorry. And you can look up their website. It won't go on any longer. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? Alderman Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just have to say that I heard some pretty wise advice, some of the Alderman. Leave the pyrotechnics to the professionals. In my 35 years career on the Fire Department, let me tell you, walking around with a nub where your fingers used to be isn't cool, you know. But Nashua puts on a great show at Home Stadium, so I hope that people will come out and enjoy themselves. Number two, I'd like to wish all my friends in Nashua and across America, Happy Birthday, America. Enjoy. Try not to eat too many hot dogs and hamburgers. And on a personal note, 40 years ago, the best thing that ever happened to me, at least that's what my wife tells me, Diane and I celebrated our 40th wedding. Diana and I celebrated our 40th wedding anniversary without getting any lawyers involved or anything. And I tell you, it's been just bliss. Yeah, the kids have been great and everything else like that. They know how to eat with the correct knife and fork, so it's all, it's all been good. So it's been a fantastic ride, and I'm looking forward to 40 more, and honey, I'll be home shortly. Thank you.
I would like to take a moment to thank Alderman Dowd for the work on the budget and all the members of the Budget Committee. There were some, you know, good conversations, good back and forth, so I appreciate the work that everyone put in on the budget, and thank you for passing it tonight. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. As everybody knows, tomorrow night, we do have a special Board of Aldermen's meeting at 7:00 PM here in the chamber, and I think we're going to be discussing a public hearing on Deerwood Drive, Lot H10-103. Immediately following or by the clock of 7:15, the Committee Infrastructure will meet. So you're welcome to stay after the meeting. Thank you.
Other committee announcements. Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. The Cultural Connection Committee meeting will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, June 28, from 12 to 1, at the Nashua Community College, which is on 505 Amherst Street. And by the way, the festival is at Greeley Park, not at the library. We did have meetings at the library to discuss the meeting at Greeley Park. I just want to say, cultural, it's the cultural committee.
Multicultural.
It's the, but it's the Cultural Connection Committee, which is multicultural connection. Okay, that's the legal name for it, okay?
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Just a reminder that personnel will be meeting on Monday, July 3, in the Alderman Center.
Hey, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. My favorite motion. I would like to make the motion that June 27, 2023, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and we adjourned at 9:03 PM. I think that's probably a record for a budget, a meeting with the budget. So thank you, everyone.